Austin.
So Thursday is out.
Alright, uh, meeting is open and we are being recorded. Joanne, do I have a, um, a, um, a little agenda?
You don't have an agenda?
I have the warrant, um, for tonight.
Did I give you one?
I just didn't give you one.
I don't have one either.
Alright, um.
That's alright, Joanne, it'll be important on Friday.
Alright, so, okay, meeting minutes from the twentieth.
Do you copy those?
I don't have it yet, I'll be in a minute.
Oh, it's executive session, just pass it around here, there's not much on it, okay, these, these are executive session, I have all the executive sessions, so here you guys can look at those, and then we're gonna speak them.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure if it is, um, why it was a, no, it's coming.
So I make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of May twenty, twenty twenty four as written?
Well, I think.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you approving those for release or just?
Um.
Just approving them?
It really matters. We can approve them for release. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't take it. I don't have the regular meeting minutes, so we can, um,
yes.
Oh, it's just executive session, nevermind, we're good. Any audience participation? Fantastic, meeting on? Department report. Dave, you wanna come on down?
No, it's okay. You're too busy.
You got nothing, or you are good?
Yeah, we're good enough.
Okay. Um, alright, so we're gonna take a look, let, should we just skip right to, we don't have Christopher, let me see if he got that to me. No word yet, and we're waiting on, is Dave, we're waiting on Dave today.
Yeah.
So what's, um, most of that stuff is in the signature file, so I didn't make the comments at this time. Okay. Okay, so then we'll go through this, uh, the D L T A. Scope of service.
Someone messing with me?
Just leads me on.
What are you looking for?
The D L T A scope of service.
Um, that would be from, uh, P V P C, right?
Okay, so that's this one, the invoice number thirty-four?
Um, there's a letter attached to it.
This one here?
Yeah, look at the letter that's attached, and then it'll tell you, D L T A is on there. I did that a long time ago, so, sorry.
Okay, so this is the invoices for March and April, um, for us to review from Pioneer Valley Planning for the Housing Rehab Program. So the total amount due here is two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents for services rendered for F Y twenty, um, Blanford Communities Program. Um, so I would make a motion to approve this invoice from Pioneer Valley Planning for Housing Rehab Program, the amount of two thousand, two hundred, two hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents. Any discussion? On favor?
Alright.
Aye. Aye. I don't think you need me to sign them.
Is that for, um, any particular houses?
Um, this was for, uh, um, just talking about the people that were due.
There's no signature line there?
I don't see a signature line. Coordinated with the contractor and owners, um, of the other ongoing project to determine hotel accommodation dates for their lead abatement work that requires relocation. Um, and then it has A D L self-evaluation and transition plan. And then administration services. So it doesn't, it says, doesn't really give me households, Jennifer, it's just telling me that ten people qualified, several decided not to, um, take part. Um, the emergency septic project. And it's talking about the bid work that was done, two projects had been walkthroughs with bids returned and bid comparison forms sent for contractor selection.
Okay, so did you say which one they closed out?
No.
Okay.
Not unless that's another.
Okay.
Alright. No, there's no such thing. Alright, we've got the Chester Blanford, um, shared services. Is that a different one? No, that's a difference. There's folders going on. Oh, that, sorry, here's another Pioneer Valley, there's two things I didn't want. Okay, so this is another Pioneer Valley Planning, this is for the same idea, this is for five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Um, this is for the septic replacement system in an estimated twelve homes, that's not correct.
There was only one that was.
Oh, okay, funds were received to complete housing rehab and septic system replacement in an estimated twelve homes in Blanford, I think they're talking about all of them together, and then again, they say the ten people, ten households backed out. So this is just repeating the same thing, um, but, so the housing rehab work for this one is two projects that get to bid, had walkthroughs, and the project on Russell Stage had construction continue with lead abatement relocation work set to be completed later in the spring, so this is, um, for May. The A D L self-evaluation transition plan, um, funds received to review all town-owned public buildings, et cetera, this is part of that, and then the administration work. So motion to approve the invoice number thirty-three from Pioneer Valley Planning, the amount of five hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-four cents for the community assistance program.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Alright.
Alright, so this one does have signatures. Just on that one. Yes.
Contract renewal that was sent to me, um, I, I printed it to give it to you tonight, and then I looked at it before I did, and it, it's dated last year.
Oh, yeah, 'cause he sent it to us with, in green highlighted, he said, um, if we could update just those things, he said, I'll send you next year, last year's, and if you just update the numbers. Sorry. Well, Joanne, I would a hundred percent bet if I have access to Microsoft, I can't open any Word docs.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that, I'm just wondering why Eric didn't take care of that.
Yeah, mine's all PDF too.
Um, would you mind, do you want me to do that, to, to check with, um, Novus and see if they can update my?
I thought I already did.
I never gotten anything, I don't think, if they can upgrade me so that I can like actually.
I said to help Jessica into that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll check it though.
Who do you need a license?
I have a license for the emails, but I can't like open and do anything, and I need it after, even if I do it in like my other Word account and try to, it doesn't.
Yeah, it's expensive, which is why you don't have it, not, not very many.
Yeah.
Like, tax collector, she doesn't have it, but she doesn't really do.
Really need, so we just have a license for the T A and for the.
Uh, no, a few people have it, but obviously if you want it, you can have it.
I go in and open it like personally.
It shouldn't be, that's ridiculous.
I didn't see it.
Alright, well.
B A doesn't have, it keeps hitting me with can't open. So.
Oh, so yeah, then that's definitely a bigger question for Novus, yeah. That's silly, that's when I'm just, it'd work, okay. Back, alright, so I'm looking for the Chester fire situation. No, I'm not. I don't know if I'm seeing that one. Am I phrasing Joanne, please?
It's been a lovely week, I said to her before I came in here, I can't wait to find out what I messed up. So which one is this?
The Chester Blanford Shared Services.
I have no idea.
We might have done that last week.
No idea, if it's not in front of you.
That's what it was.
So it's just a carry.
Or the week before. So I'm just gonna write a note. Okay, it was just like a one page that we were signing after our, um, uh, it's what Ira had given to us to go into, um, I believe we signed it last week, I remember looking at it, it was like, we aren't putting any money into it, the whole thing was like five hundred dollars through Pioneer Valley, we are gonna do like work, um, in lieu of, um, paying, and it was just to continue to move forward with research, I feel like we signed it, but we're gonna, I'll put a check into it.
Yeah, like blanking.
Alright, no worries, and so then the current shift thing we're gonna have to do next week.
Yep.
Well, is, is it, is the contract exactly the same as the previous year?
He just updated some numbers, I can go get it, let me just go get it.
Because you can, you can approve it, and then everybody can sign it la- later.
Oh, that's true, B, yeah.
You don't have to have a permit, yeah, that way you just get it done, and then you can sign it anytime.
Okay, so here we go, proposed amendment. So it's the same contract as last year, however, the title of performance, he changed it to the dates July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, the compensation was updated from thirty-three thousand to thirty-four thousand eight hundred, and from two thousand seven hundred and fifty a month to two thousand nine hundred per month. Everything else is the same. And I think that that's what we had, um, built into our budget. So I would, um, make a motion to approve the contract amendment between the Town of Blanford and Eric, current shift as updated. Any discussion?
Well.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then you could sign it at your leisure.
Alright, um, then we have the P V P C Housing Rehab, those are what we just did.
Yeah, we did though.
So it's the D L T thing, maybe something different. Alright, um, then we have a motion to appoint Chuck Benson to the Rec Committee for the term July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then Finance Committee to approve year-end line and transfers, so I have some transfers here.
I suspect this won't be the last of it, so. And what happened, obviously, is, but I called the accounting group today and went through the whole thing, so.
Okay.
What happens is that, once you complete your account, your department, you've gotta look at other departments and say, can we pull money over, so, and, and we'll be doing this till the end of the year.
Yeah.
Until what, July ninth, I think it is, is the last date? Um, so, will we just read through them?
Sure.
Okay, so the first one is to move money from Assistant Treasurer Collector over to Treasurer Collector, which is two separate accounts. Basically, because there was a change in the treasurer role, we need to get the money out of one account into the other. Um, Veterans Benefits, we, there was ten thousand dollars sitting in, under Veterans Benefits that historically has not been used, so we went ahead and said, let's move it from there over to the new Town Hall Maintenance and Repairs.
Okay.
From my teaching system bills, challenges, you're gonna see a lot of that on here for Town Hall. The Reserve Account, after these moves from the Reserve Account to Town Hall Utilities, Reserve Account to External I T Support for the rest of the year, and the old Town Hall expenses were now down to about a thousand dollars in the Reserve Account, so. Okay. Um, Highway Repair New Roads, um, there was a, you know, we need to get fuel for the rest of the year, that's around fifty-six hundred dollars estimated.
Okay.
Um, to move it from Highway Repair New Roads, there's money sitting there into Highway Vehicle Fuel.
Okay.
Do you have any challenges with that, Dave?
Yeah, I do.
What?
Yeah, I got like two more bills coming in right now.
Okay, how much?
Oh, probably about nine thousand dollars.
Okay, you got like sixteen thousand dollars in there.
I still, I'm still waiting for everyone to come in, and I'm just preparing some results.
If, if we have to, we'll move from another, you know, we gotta pay the bills, so wherever they come in, we'll find the money in other areas to pay it. Okay. Um, Town Council, um, there was money sitting in there, and we've moved, we're moving some of that for this four thousand dollars into Town, Town Hall, this leaves. The challenge is where you take the money.
Yeah.
You know, um, but we looked at what is happening as of today, for what, where the money is, and that's what we found.
Okay.
Any questions, or?
Okay, I need to just sign it to this chair.
This is a signature copy.
Oh, I've got one here that I signed, you can, so, um.
So you want me to sign this copy that I have?
We'll have you sign this one, Jen. So, motion to approve the, um, year-end line transfer request as reviewed. There's a second?
Second, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so Finance, you guys can vote and sign. Jen, you guys need to make a vote, and then.
Yeah, okay. So, I moved to sign and approve all of the listed transfers to and from as just detailed. And anybody have any questions? No? So, is that clear?
Second. Second. All in favor?
All in favor?
Yes. Alright, um, so I think, is there one more signature that is needed on that?
Yeah, it said the bottom.
But there's multiple departments.
Okay, um, we have a warrant, uh, warrant number twenty-four. You guys wanna take a look at it, so I would make a motion so we can discuss, and would you approve, um, warrant number twenty-four? Is there a second? Alright, so let's take a look at it, and then.
Give me a copy to the warrant.
So this one is the water warrant. Oh, this is, okay, this is the one from last week, that we had moved along, this was warrant twenty-three, so that's gonna have to be a separate. This is.
Electric's so expensive. On the line.
Wait till a while, but it's gonna get worse.
It's going down in August, they said in the news tonight.
It's going down in August, yeah, it doesn't go down in the summer.
No, they said this year it's going to. But, I mean, that was the six o'clock, or the five o'clock news, who knows? They all over by that.
You know the turn fake news, right?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we just have to change these, so we have to like, go up to take this out.
Okay.
And type this in.
Okay.
What he's got here, we'll have to type that in, and then take these numbers out and type it into here.
Okay. There's chair. This is.
Alright, um, and then we have the, um, warrant from last week, we had, or weeks prior, we had pulled because of the monies from water that we needed to explain for the Greenside Tree Land, um, so we have that one in front of us now to sign. Um, so motion to approve, um, the revised warrant number twenty-three.
How much was that?
Um, that was, remember, thank you, um, so, remember that we had thought it was just gonna be the one.
So it was nine thousand instead of forty-five.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, actually, fourteen thousand.
It's the nine, no, it's fourteen altogether. That was, so then, so this is, um, they had taken those out, so instead of the twenty-three, this one was for the fourteen, and then we'll get another one that will have those back in, so it'll just, we'll get another one for the nine thousand.
Oh, that's a lot more difference than that forty-five hundred he told us.
Yeah. Remember, he explained it that they had done that, they, he accidentally tagged everything blue, so they did both jobs. Water money. Right?
That's hard one.
Alright, um, okay, so we have the fire contract, she just handed it to me here, then. Are we doing on time? Okay.
We're doing fine.
We're doing good. Um, here it is, it's through Pioneer Valley Planning, I think we already did this, but we'll do it again, just in case. Um, and it is, in the amount, the D L T A grant is five thousand dollars, the cash match from P V P C is two hundred and fifty, and the municipal in-kind match from Blanford is two hundred and fifty, and it is for Chester Blanford Shared Fire Department Study. Is there a second? That was a motion.
Second.
Um, and you just got it. All in favor?
I know. I wanna be with Chester and a fire department, that's all.
What is that for?
Well, spend money, just keep spending money.
But it's not our, it's a.
Two hundred and fifty bucks is two hundred and fifty bucks.
We're not paying two hundred and fifty dollars.
You just said it were.
It's a municipal in-kind match.
Well, whatever, it's the little like that. I don't wanna spend one with Chester, thank you.
No money.
It, it will be if we get combined. Trust me.
We'll agree to this.
Fair enough.
Okay, I'm gonna put this one here before I forget, Joanne, yell the name. Goes there, alright, I think we are ready to move on. Okay, so we are going to review our warrant for the town meetings now. I never yell.
They never yell.
Alright, so we'll go through article by article, um, yeah, now we roll home with Mark, and then he'll just let us know if there's any changes or anything that on Dave has actually. So the first one, uh, except the town reports, um, is simple majority. Article two is, um, transfer from available funds.
Be raised and appropriate.
Yeah, raised and appropriate.
Oh, sorry, raised and appropriate or transfer from, so they'll take out transfer.
Yeah, yeah, Dave raised the motions at home.
Okay, so it's the money for Gateway Regional, and that's the simple majority? And, um, Finance, you'll recommend? When you ask, yes. Um, Article three is the raised and appropriate, so take out transfer from the. Um, for vocational, um, simple majority, and you guys will recommend that one. Article four is raised and appropriate again, um, the transportation for vogue. And simple majority, you guys will be fine with that.
What was that?
Uh, vogue, um, travel.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, five is raised and appropriate.
That's the budget.
The, okay, so, so take out, yeah. Um, so the budget for, that was simple majority, Finance recommends.
And I assume, as we have in the past, you wanna do it by general government safety.
That would be fantastic. Um, be some, always look at all the good things that come out of COVID, you know, wasn't that what we did with COVID, or did we do it even different?
Well, COVID, we, we also did the consent agenda, as we were out in ten minutes.
Yay, COVID. Articles.
Okay.
See if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer, so, uh, borrow money, and that's simple majority.
Yeah, 'cause that's not, that's just the, uh, foreign anticipation.
And Finance will recommend.
That's something that's asked every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Article seven, transfer, um, from free cash to stabilization, is that simple majority too?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, eight, transfer free cash to broad stabilization, simple majority. Um, nine, the same, but for library, and ten, the same, but for education, and, um, Finance is in agreement with all those. Oh, Article eleven, mine says twenty-one. Um, transfer from free cash to fifty thousand, uh, for the town building condition assessment.
Says be fifty thousand, not or some, some.
Okay.
In the motion.
Free cash, some, other some, okay.
Let's remove the change.
Right, exactly, hopefully not.
Hopefully not, um, and Finance recommends.
Yeah.
Uh, Article twelve, the transfer from, so this is a water department budget.
I have a question on that one.
Sure.
For Finance Committee, so, the warrant article seven sixty-four, six three six, the water department budget is seven seventy-three, or eighty-seven.
Right, and that's when, when we spoke to the water department was seven seventy-three, so.
Is the number in the warrant incorrect?
I would say the number in the warrant is eight seven.
So.
So that's gonna change the overall.
That's the old, the old number.
Water department receipts. That's just water revenue, right, snap.
That's, that's what's, or is, so which number would it be?
Which one do you do, total expenditures or water revenue, or you like to know?
Well, we're, we're, we're approving the budget, the overall budget, so you've got, uh, water revenue is a certain dollar amount, and then what, what, the other, other funding sources are what?
Transfer from this town.
Right.
Why is that?
Right.
So there's a thirty in it.
Oh, we're doing those separately, yeah, so we're, we're just approving that number as the budget, and the, uh, those are, Joe's, are separate, separate, for separate projects, yeah. So what is the correct number then for Article twelve?
Seven seven three, four eight seven.
Does that change the overall number, Dave?
No, that actually makes the budget work.
The enterprise. Thank goodness.
The number is higher a little more, higher.
Slightly higher, it's a little bit higher, and, but it's based on, on, uh, receipts, so it's not, it's not from taxation.
Okay, and then Article thirteen is, uh, transferring retained earnings from water, um, to water stabilization, so, majority, Finance recommends. Article fourteen, uh, vote to transfer from water, retain earnings, uh, to water department capital, um, simple majority.
Was there any exception on that one? I know that there was.
We talked about it, um, the other two weeks ago, with water.
Fourteen.
I think, Dave, you said you would change that amount?
I thought that there was just some question that had been raised by the water department itself.
No, and that was regarding water that they put in here, this is
So.
from retained earnings, and the problem was, the original numbers the water department gave us, they didn't have that much retained earnings left.
Ah, okay.
So, I talked to them, and they agreed to change that, at least in like three thousand dollars of retained earnings.
Okay, so, is, is, so is Article fourteen correct then?
Yes.
Twenty to twenty-five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Article fifteen, uh, transfer from broadband, um, to municipal light plant, uh, simple majority. Finance recommends. Article sixteen, vote from broadband, retain earnings to municipal light plant stabilization. Uh, simple majority, Finance recommends. Seventeen, uh, from broadband, retain earnings to pay toward the principal interest. Uh, simple majority, Finance recommends. Eighteen, uh, from broadband, retain earnings, uh, to town's general front, fund to reimburse the town for the sum approved by the vote taken, okay, from, uh, last year.
They're paying it back.
And that's simple majority. Okay. Um, and then nineteen to offer as a town clerk to make. Yada, yada.
Okay, we gotta go back, if you could, for a moment, to Article fifteen.
Okay.
Again, there's a difference between the numbers that we were given at one point, and the numbers that are now on budget.
Okay.
So the warrant art is three ninety-five, the budget for broadband revenue is four fifty-seven. So I'm, budget is based upon, the warrant's based upon the budget, so we changed the number in the warrant.
Okay.
And again, this, that's receipts, so. So what's, what's the total number?
Four fifty-seven.
Even?
Seven four.
Seven forty.
And everything else matched up. Um, I think the only one that, you may get some questions on was the fifty thousand for the building assessments. I was hoping to hear from Christopher, so I know that he would talk to that, but I don't know, wait, he said. Uh, out of time, not available tonight, text if you want me to answer questions.
So the only difference between this and the set he originally submitted was he was gonna take fifty thousand dollars out of stabilization. And put twenty-five thousand dollars back, Finance Committee, and we talked about it, decided, we wouldn't put anything in there, but we'd just give fifty thousand free cash, so it's, leaves you more money in stabilization, would have the other way, but it still leaves us with two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in free cash after August.
And the fifty thousand is looking for all town building assessment, correct, it's not just Town Hall?
It's, it says building, it just says building, it doesn't say floor.
Okay.
But it also doesn't say which building.
Yeah.
I think.
I, I have a feeling it's all because. Well, Christopher has spoken about this before, he said like this building might be like twenty-five, twenty-six, so we must be talking about nice buildings, so I think.
Okay, and that's just an assessment so that we can add anything to our capital projects that need to be added, correct? And then undertake any own, any lesser work that we're able to pay for, is that the idea there?
I think, I mean, my, my thought would be, it's an assessment.
So that we, so we have an idea, no. Sorry, an assessment so we have an idea of what we need to put onto our capital plan, if there's any big items. Or if there's something small that we can budget for, you know, within the next couple years.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure before we have questions other way.
Yep.
Okay. I think it looks good, I don't.
Buildings. I'm sure there's someone gonna ask a question about that.
There's nothing related to it on the budget.
Nothing related to it on the budget, probably.
No.
Well, so if they ask, the answer is, there's nothing in the warrant, so it's.
Retains what, right, so it's.
Not. We discussed this meeting, unless someone has an update about that, the committee's still meeting.
Okay.
Um, but since you brought that up, we should discuss that most recent bill. Um, so I know there's, there's some question about the most recent bill, we'll bring it up and then I'll.
Like ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not been paid, and I never saw.
Is that included in this?
No.
Joanne?
There's, there's an extra bill for five thousand. I was gonna actually send out an email to her, but you know, that's why.
Pull up the bill, wish I could.
Do you have a contract that these bills are being generated from?
Um, we do have a contract with that. So we.
Who's managing the contract? Was it the T A? No, really, wasn't it? So we'll have to look at the contract and see what the sequence of events are and when it's supposed to get paid.
So the bill is for ten thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars. Um, and it is saying phase A. Review and confirmation concept, so it looks like that's already been paid up to date, that was the seventy-two thousand five hundred. Phase B is the schematic design, totaling one hundred and five thousand. The amount billed to date is the sixty-three thousand. Previously billed is fifty-two thousand three hundred forty-five. This invoice is the ten thousand, so I don't know how much we've already paid about.
I, I would have planned on contacting accounting and saying, in fact, I talked to them a little bit today, but they didn't have it at their fingertips. What's left? You know, what have they paid and what have they paid for, you know, what documents do they have?
Total contract.
And we need a copy, I, I need to see.
A hundred and seventy-seven.
Okay.
Five hundred.
We added more to that than that.
Yeah.
So they're saying sixty percent of the work for phase B is completed.
We've never even seen it.
We don't have anything.
Right.
Okay, so what's the next step for that one, we're gonna, we need to.
Yeah.
With big deals like this, you gotta have a leader that's saying you control the contract. They control payments, they're, they're coming in and giving you what you need, right?
We gotta, you gotta make sure that they're delivering on their deliverables.
Right, and that, you know, you read the contract to say, if you don't, you know, there's, it's both sides, right? If you're not coming through on your end with what you need, sometimes those contracts will take in and say, hey, you met the date, you owe us this money. So I think it's, if you guys want me to take a look at it, I'd be happy to take a look at it.
Was in charge of all that.
Understood, yeah.
So it kinda got dropped, we had meetings, we told them what we wanted, voted on it, and they were supposed to bring us drawings, so we could present them with a rough cost.
Today, right?
For this meeting, and I, and I've never seen anything, so, but does, does the contract have a scope of services that lists whatever. But should have.
I'm sure we've looked at it, we're probably just forgetting, um, I would have to look at it again, make sure it has scope.
Cuz yeah, I'm, I'm sure it has a scope, but it's just seeing if they, if they've hit their marks, right?
Yeah.
And have we hit our marks?
Right, right, I'm worried about that.
Okay, so I know, but also, but if we don't hit our marks, we can also be penalized in some of these contracts, right?
A municipal contract, you, you don't pay until you get your deliverables. And so it's, municipal contracts are usually one of the street.
Yeah.
Luckily.
Well, I would say don't pay anything to pull it over.
I agree.
Jeff, question?
And does somebody have the contract?
Committee, did the building stuff committee actually add for specific dynamics?
Yes, I didn't say that, so, cuz I'm not the T A.
No T A.
So, um.
That's.
Joanne, will you put on the next agenda that we're gonna touch base again about that, uh, the bill per. West, whatever it is, there's something else.
Yeah, you weren't. He, his time is probably not, no, so.
There needs to be some.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You can't make interviews on Thursday, one of our candidates can't make it on Thursday anyways, he's vacationing.
Couldn't do Thursday either, I realized, so we were thinking next Monday?
So.
Would that work?
What are you gonna do with all the other business that you have on Monday?
Um, get through a weekend and table what we want to.
If you do five-thirty and. Five o'clock, whatever time.
I don't think I can get.
Five-thirty.
Thirty.
And seven.
Yeah.
You want time, hour of interview and then time to discuss between. Brian says, anytime next week, I'll have to call Christine, Christina back.
Okay. Okay, um, and Monday would be great if you guys are okay with that at five-thirty, and yeah, five-thirty and seven, I guess.
People pass seven-thirty, that's an hour time.
And we'll just get through whatever business we can and table their ads.
Did it before.
But I think that.
And you need an executive session. That day as well.
Yes.
Not, not just for them, I need an executive session.
Um, so will you make sure there's an executive session for union negotiations? Please.
I'm just gonna say, June tenth, we're talking, so we want five-thirty for interviews, plus our regular.
Five-thirty for one, seven for another, and then plus regular, yeah.
Well, I don't have to do that, do I? Oh, do we go in, okay.
No, you can just put interviews and we'll just move the agenda around.
Does the time matter, is what I'm asking? The time that we meet with the individual people, does that matter, or can I do an agenda at five-thirty and say interviews?
Do the agenda at five-thirty.
Yeah.
You don't have to, cuz we list them that, that you don't wanna, you don't wanna put their times.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be, I mean, I'm just gonna throw it out there, wouldn't it be more, give it more justice to do it on Tuesday? Do business on Monday, do the interviews on Tuesday, and so you can focus, cuz it's such an important.
Yeah.
Thing.
That's what I originally said in this Tuesday, so that's my thought, I agree with you a hundred percent. Why don't we put it to a halt?
I don't think we can. We can calendars.
Yeah, we can do it Tuesday, that's fine.
I'd try to do it Tuesday night at five o'clock, oh, five-thirty you gave.
I, I mean.
That's fine, five-thirty.
I, I may be able to do five if I.
Five-thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's just those two, if you, five-thirty is fine.
Yeah.
And they are. Please, Christina.
Ferrera.
Ferrera and Brian. Moriarty. Like, you know, sure.
Yes.
All right, so about two minutes please, your executive session is when?
Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
Thank you.
So it's the.
That's for collective bargaining. All right, well, actual, yeah, actual negotiation.
On the eleven, no.
Where in the.
Right, tail end of the day.
Just so she.
Okay, so I need to talk real quick about, um. Nicole Sanford, I had a conversation with Nicole Sanford, um, T J and I, T J, um. Boarded me an email from Peter Sparks, who works for the Cemetery Commission, he was having some difficulties getting to, what's the name of the cemetery?
Warfield.
Warfield. Ju- Julius Hall. Um, so I had a conversation with Nicole Sanford from Springfield Water, who is. Just before I forget, wonderful to work with, and I talked to her about, um. Christopher was talking to her on like a monthly basis, so when we have a T A, we need to make sure that, remember to have them. Touch base with her on a monthly basis, because just to make sure we're all online.
Nicole Sanford.
Yeah, she was fantastic. Anyway, so she sent me the letter that, um, we had agreed to, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty. Um, access to Warfield and Sizer Family Cemeteries. And so it said basically that they have granted permission to the members of the Cemetery Commission from Blanford to enter commission property. For the purpose of assessing, assessing, um, Blanford's Warfield and Sizer Family Cemeteries for maintenance or repair of the headstones, which was happening at that time.
Yeah.
Access to the cemeteries will be from Commission Gate twenty-one on Beech Hill Road. Um, access. Well, there's no record of that, hold on, let me finish.
Yeah.
So through gate twenty-one, Beech Hill Road, um, access to the commission property shall be coordinated with Joanne Smith. So she's the commission land steward, um, and they required a forty-eight hour advance notice for the dates. Um, that we were gonna be on site, and additionally, please provide the names of the Cemetery Commissioner members that would be on site. Um, her information, and then a vehicle placard is attached to this letter noting that, um. The Blanford members are authorized to put that on when they're on the property. Um, so that mass state police and commission staff are aware this process has been granted. Um, so we have agreed to that and signed that back in twenty-twenty.
Back in twenty-twenty, the letter that we got was not that letter, all right? It was explained to the Springfield Water at the time. That we cannot access the cemetery through gate twenty-one, because the right-of-way is not maintained. Okay, you can go in about a quarter mile, then it's just woods, you can see where the road goes, but you can't, it's not passable. Gate twenty is on Blanford property, about a quarter mile of it is on Blanford property. When Peter got stopped, he was on Blanford property, but on the other side of the gate. Going in from Julius Hall Road to the cemeteries is maybe a little more than a quarter of a mile. Going in from gate twenty-one, it's a mile plus.
Okay.
And it's not accessible, Peter maintained that right-of-way, which belongs to Blanford. He has maintained that so that he can get in with his ATV. To actually put a truck on that road, he's gonna have to take a chainsaw and cut some trees, which we don't want to do.
Cuz this is the only letter that.
Well, this is it, and the letter that I got was from, uh, Joanne from, uh. Yeah, Bordenbrook. Okay.
So if you have that, bring it for next week, so I will put it on the agenda to talk about. Um, so the other question Nicole asked was, so she said at the time that this was granted. That, um, there was some work and repair to be done to the headstones, which is the reason why he needed to get to the cemetery. She said that they like mow and weed whack. At the cemetery. So she was asking what maintenance needs to be done with the cemetery.
Yeah, and, and that's what, uh, Peter does, he does the mowing and the weed whacking at Warfield Cemetery.
So there's some.
Sizer Cemetery is, some of the monuments, they got trees growing in them and stuff like that, so we just. Make sure that the stones are okay.
Right, so it sounds like we should probably ask Nicole to join us on Zoom. Um, next week and ask Peter to be here as well, so if you wanna ask Peter to be here.
Sure.
And then, um, I'll let Nicole know. Um, and we can just touch base and clear that up. Um, the other question she had was, she said there's a camera that's been posted.
There's cameras all over the place.
A cemetery commission's name on it. Is there, do we have a camera?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so she did, so if you don't mind checking that out, she said there was a camera there that had Blanford cemetery listed on.
Uh, at gate twenty-one?
At gate twenty-one.
Gate twenty-one, all right, I'll check that out.
Okay. All right. Um. Okay, so we will touch, she said going forward, if you were planning on doing, if we are planning on doing more maintenance, and we needed to do. I wrote notes on my, in my car while I was driving, and I left it there, the intergovernmental agreement.
Yeah.
Um, because of any like damage that might be done to roads or whatnot, then we can move forward with that. Um, we can go that route, but let's talk next week and see.
Yeah, because remember, they have approached us about doing work. On some of the right-of-ways on Springfield Water that we own, and Dave, didn't you drop off some material for them?
No, they dropped off material for us.
Okay.
And we have a intergovernmental agreement with them for that.
Two or three loads of stone up there, cuz we're doing, um, maintenance on the Julius Hall side.
Yeah, but has any of that been done, do you know?
Of the.
The work.
Their work?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so, I mean, it has been trusted.
One of the correspondence that we got was that. Somebody came in with heavy equipment and moved the stuff that was supposed to be for the road, and I don't. I was totally lost at that. But that gate is on Blanford's property. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so we'll plan on that then next week.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that was all I had. All right, then we will, um, adjourn at six forty-six, not to re. Are you gonna go to the picnic on the ninth? That's my calendar, Memorial Day picnic, we need to change it.
I saw that, yeah.